Excellent. Okay, so we're going to start this meeting over. Apologies to the public and the rest of the Commission for those technical difficulties. We are ready to begin. Welcome to the January 17th, 2024 regular meeting of the San Francisco Elections Commission. I'm the President, Robin Stone. The time is now 6:12 PM, and I call the meeting to order. Before we proceed further, I would like to ask Commission Secretary Marisa Davis to briefly explain some procedures for participating in today's meeting.
Can you hear me? Yes. The meetings, the minutes of this meeting will reflect that the meeting is being held in person at City Hall, Room 408, One Dr. Carlton B. Goodlett Place in San Francisco, and remotely via WebEx. As authorized by the Elections Commission's February 15, 2023 vote, members of the public may attend the meeting to observe and provide public comment either at the physical meeting location or remotely. Details and instructions for participating remotely are listed on the Commission's website and on today's meeting agenda. Public comment will be available on each item of this agenda. Each member of the public will be allowed three minutes to speak, six minutes if you are on the line with an interpreter. When providing public comment, you are encouraged to state your name clearly. Once your three minutes have expired, the staff will thank you and you will be muted. Please address your comments to the entire Commission and not to a specific individual. While providing public comment remotely, please ensure that you are in a quiet location. When joining by phone, you will hear a beep when you are connected to the meeting. You will be automatically muted and in listening mode only. To make a public comment, dial *3 to raise your hand when your item of interest comes up. You will be added to the public comment line. You will hear you have raised your hand to ask a question. Please wait until the host calls on you. The line will be silent as you wait your turn to speak. If at any time you change your mind and wish to withdraw yourself from the public comment line, press *3 again, and you will hear the system say you have lowered your hand. When joining by WebEx or web browser, make sure the participants' side panel is showing by clicking on the participants icon. At the bottom of the list of attendees is a small button or icon that looks like a hand. Press the hand icon to raise your hand. You will be unmuted when it is your time to comment. When you are done with your comment, click the hand icon to lower your hand. In addition to participating in real time, interested persons are encouraged to participate in this meeting by submitting public comment in writing by 12 noon on the day of the meeting to elections commission at sfgov.org. It will be shared with the Commission after this meeting has concluded and will be included as part of the official meeting file. Thank you, President Stone.
Thank you. Secretary Davis, will you please proceed with Item 1, Commission Roll Call?
Yes. President Stone.
Present.
Vice President Giordano.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhols.
Here.
Commissioner Dai.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Here.
Commissioner Luvulsi.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
President Stone, with seven members present and accounted for, you have a quorum.
Excellent. And Commissioner Dai, will you recite the land acknowledgement for today's meeting?
Yes. The San Francisco Elections Commission acknowledges that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Remaitush Aloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Remaitush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors and relatives of the Remaitush community and affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. That closes out Agenda Item Number 1. Agenda Item, before we move actually to Agenda Item Number 2, I just wanted to announce a quick agenda, just change in order. So Agenda Item Number 4 is the Director's Report, and then Agenda Item Number 5 is Commissioner's Report, and then Agenda Item Number 6 is Policies and Priorities Review. And we're actually going to move Agenda Item Number 6 between 4 and 5 so that the Director can stay for that discussion, and then we will pick back up with Agenda Item Number 5. So just to rephrase that, the item will go, the order of items will go Agenda Item Number 4, Agenda Item Number 6, then Agenda Item Number 5. Let's move to Agenda Item Number 2, General Public Comment. Public comment on any issue within the Elections Commission's general jurisdiction that is not covered by another item on this agenda.
There are no hands raised. There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you. We will close out Agenda Item Number 2 and move to Agenda Item Number 3, Approval of Previous Meeting Minutes, Discussion and Possible Action on Previous Elections Commission Meeting Minutes. So just to kick this off quickly, the, we had had these items, for the most part, agendized in December. They were postponed due to the amount of material that we had to get through last meeting. And then additionally, I was asked to put together just a little memo on our, on our meeting minutes in general. And those, just to quickly run through what is on that document, it just explains, pulls the specific section of the Sunshine Ordinance, walking through what is required for meeting minutes, and then also pulls a high-level explanation of the Roberts Rules, the Roberts Rules pertaining to meeting minutes. There are way more Roberts Rules than what is included in here. If folks recall from a year ago, it's crazy that was already a year ago, we, the, I put together a very abbreviated, I think, two-sheeter on Roberts Rules that the Commission could follow to manage and run, operate our meetings. And included in that document was also a explanation of what is required in meeting minutes based on Robert Rules, Roberts Rules. And our bylaws specifically state that we follow Roberts Rules for our meeting minutes, and then, of course, we are all obligated to comply with the San Francisco Sunshine Ordinance. So that is what you will find in the memo document. And then the other items are the September, October, November meeting minutes with Commissioner Dai's revisions, which we did not have the opportunity to get through in the last meeting. So I don't know if Commissioner Dai, you had something specific you wanted to share to intro those edits? Otherwise, we can open it up to, to comment.
Yeah, just briefly, I, my edits were often to fix typos and to improve readability. In some cases, I tried to make them more succinct, and also try to balance out, like in some cases, I think particularly in the September meeting minutes, there seemed to be a lot of detail in some things and no detail in others. So, so with my notes, I tried to balance that out a little. So that is all I have to say.
And if folks have forgotten since the new year, you can just feel free to raise your hand using the blue button on your, on your screen. I can make a couple comments if folks don't have any. So I think where I had concern, because I had raised, I had raised this, is that there isn't really that much that we need to include in our meeting minutes. And I, and I have concerns with big substantive additions and changes that were, that are more material or added specific context, but perhaps added very specific context that I felt perhaps were not necessary, but maybe what one commissioner wanted, mentioned. And so I had asked that the full Commission review these to make sure they agreed with the changes before we approve. And going forward, part of the reason why I hoped that folks can review the, the memo I put together, we can all just agree that we don't need to have these very lengthy edits. I agree that, you know, if there are typos and things of that nature, fine. I also don't think we need to overload the Commission Secretary with word changes that are just personal preference. And so that's my feeling about it. Really, we just need to make sure we comply with the Sunshine Ordinance and the specific asks of the, of the, of Roberts Rules. And I don't think we need to make it more intense than that. The other piece that I wanted to give feedback on is that I think it's inappropriate for the Commission to insert names of public commentators who did not provide their names, especially if, if they did not provide their last names. We're not required to do that unless they offer it. We can, it specifically says, "The names and titles were applicable for closed session," but then "the members of the public who spoke on each matter," if the speakers identified themselves, whether they supported or opposed, and a brief, brief summary of that agenda item. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to add in our names just in case we know them. That is my personal preference. Again, open to hear other people's feedback, but I don't think that should be a practice of ours unless people offer their names. Those are my, my pieces. Yes, Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Thank you, President Stone. I would agree with you, and I also just would add as, just as a guideline, when I think, when I, and as I understand how minutes should be prepared with Roberts Rule of Orders, according to Roberts Rule of Order, and also to, just as a reminder, we have a recording of every meeting. So this is just a sum, the minutes are supposed to be a summary of our actions. And, and then also, I believe that the bylaws or, maybe it's the Sunshine Ordinance that says that we have to identify the speakers. And if, and in, consistent with what President Stone has said, if they don't identify themselves, I don't think that we should include their names. We should just share the information that they share. But I would say as a rule, because they will typically give an opinion or whatever, that one good thing to do is to take any adjectives or adverbs out of every description, because I think that's a way that people then can introduce bias. And our goal is to just present the facts straight up. And it's up to, if people want more information, they can simply refer to the recording and interpret it the way that they choose to, because everybody has a different perception of how things are presented and received. So that would be my recommendation. But I also think that as the items come up, if there is no action taken, so for example, Director Arns presents his report. So Director Arns presents his report. We have the document that shows what his report is. If there's no action taken, then nothing more needs to be said, because anybody can refer to the recording if they want more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Secretary Davis, would you mind actually closing the attendee box so I can see Commissioner Bernhols? Thank you so much, just in case the Commissioner raises their hand. Want to make sure I can see.
Yeah, so I don't have any problem with instituting that, that policy moving forward. If someone doesn't introduce themselves, that we don't identify them. However, in many cases, they did introduce themselves, and it, sometimes it's hard for, to catch the name, so, or the correct spelling. And if we happen to, to have that information, I don't see why we shouldn't provide it. I know that's something that, that this Commission has done in the past to, to try to get people's names correct. And then again, I don't, I don't have a problem with moving forward. I, I think part of the challenge is that there's been a great inconsistency in the minutes and what we capture, and some minutes are very detailed and some, you know, are fairly sparse. And if we want to go with sparse moving forward, I think that's fine. Although, as someone who has had to consult a lot of minutes lately, I think very few members of the public have the stamina to, to go through, you know, three-hour-plus meetings, recordings. And so capturing a little bit of color is, is not a terrible idea.
Okay, I will also respond, this is President Stone. There are multiple instances, Commissioner Dai, where you added people's names when it previously said "community member." So I just want to be very explicit, like I think we all agree then, I mean, not we all agree, the three of us seem to be on the same page. But if there's an area where we couldn't catch the name and they gave it, that's one thing. But if they didn't give their name, I don't, I personally would advocate against including it. I think it's inappropriate. And I think members of the public are entitled to that level of anonymity if they want it. And I hear you about the inconsistency. I think that's why I put together the memo, is to give direction. But I also think it's okay. It doesn't need to be perfect. And I, you know, I think, I don't think we need to overdo it. I understand that you've had, in your experience recently in your review, have needed to consult the minutes more, but we do have, you know, we know what agenda items there were. The Secretary does put up the recording. There are many ways to access it without us having to drag on lengthy minutes discussions, which has happened ever since I've been on this Commission. So I think going forward, let's keep it brief. Let's, let's really stick to what we are required to do. And hopefully, if we can have some general consensus, that the names of folks are only included if they've explicitly provided, provided their names. And of course, edits to spelling are welcomed, are welcomed as well. Would folks, I'd be interested to hear other members of the Commission. This is more just a general topic than it is specifically around the September, October, Commissioner Parker.
Thank you. I appreciate the memo and would agree with generally this discussion. I think, you know, I agree with the, the comment about the members of the public and only including their names if they provide it, and if there is some knowledge to get a correct spelling, or, or you know the name and it was misunderstood in the, you know, the instance itself, that it's fine to correct. So I agree with all of that. And I appreciate with the memo, it kind of key words that I would say took away is that what was done versus said, just kind of reiterating what has already been said and would encourage us, yeah, moving forward to do these things. I, I appreciate the last thing that you just said, President Stone, I, of us not trying to be too focused on perfect, because I don't know that that's the best use of our time. Accurate is probably the most important, you know? And, you know, and when we're, when we're capturing what was done, the topics, the, the very high level, you know, if there's a document that definitely covers what was shared in that item, great. But very high-level topics and, and focusing on accuracy as opposed to perfect is, is where we should put our energy, because we have a lot more things to spend our time on in our meetings. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. Okay. I otherwise think, I, my feedback specifically is about going forward. So otherwise, if Commissioners don't have concerns with the, with what Commissioner Dai has provided in feedback previously, my hope is that we can have general consensus about the process going forward. But if anyone has concerns or feedback about Commissioner Dai's feedback on those minutes from the last year, or from last year's minutes, please raise those now. Otherwise, I'm just going to ask for general consensus that we move to adopt the drafted changes from Commissioner Dai. Okay, let's not drag it on much longer. Okay. So we are going to accept Commissioner Dai's minutes changes for the September, October, November meetings. And going forward with our minutes, we will try and keep them brief and fairly consistent where possible, using folks's name if provided, and spell check, and, you know, edits, accuracy changes, word, grammar, spelling, et cetera, are welcomed in feedback changes. Yes, Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, thank you, President Stone. I think also, like, another thing we could do is, you know, during public comment, we could remind members of the public that if they would like their name reflected in the minutes, they could just identify themselves, because some people might forget. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano. Anyone have any? I think that, personally, I think that's a good idea. Happy to, happy to ask Secretary Davis to include that in the, in the script. Okay. So we don't need to vote on it, but I just would love just a general nod, everyone is agreement of go forward. Okay. Wonderful. Glad we're getting these three off the plate. And thank you, Commissioner Dai, for your extensive work on those. Appreciate it. Let's move to public comment on Agenda Item Number 3, Approval of Previous Meeting Minutes.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. That will close out Agenda Item Number 3. Let's move to Agenda Item Number 4, the January 2024 Director's Report, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Monthly Director's Report and the Many Other Items on His Agenda Item. Oh, yes. Commissioner Parker.
Just, just a quick point of order, and I may have missed this, because I knew you talked about the order of things. Were we supposed to do General Public Comment before the minutes?
We did.
And I just wasn't paying.
It was brief. No one was, no one raised their hand. Thank you for keeping us honest. Yes, Director Arns.
Thank you, President Stone. So a couple of, well, one update on my direct, from my Director's Letter. On Item 1B, we indicated that the logic and accuracy would begin on January 17th. However, the translator that the Secretary of State's office uses was late in getting the final translations to the Secretary of State, who was then late getting the translations to the counties. So our testing will actually begin next Monday, on the 22nd. We issued a press release today indicating that change. Then also, just so the Commission realizes, ballots will be going out Friday and Saturday to overseas voters. So we've, we've already, we're already deep into the election, even though we haven't received your ballot or voter information pamphlet yet. And then, what, so also, at the end of the Director's Letter, there's a list of items that we're providing the Commissioners in relation to doing, conducting outreach for, for the election. So there's a list of items, and I'll leave this here, you guys can, can grab it after the meeting, I guess. I don't know if you want to talk about this now, or how you want to go about the Commission supporting the outreach efforts for the department. But President Stone had put forward previously how the Commissioners can support the department in conducting outreach for the March election. And as far as staffing, any sort of events or tablings or things like that, we, we have sufficient personnel for those activities. But we think where the Commissioners could be supportive of outreach for the election is to actually, to use the materials, which are also on our website. There's links to all these materials, the digital copies on our website, too, if you want to share those links with your friends. But the idea is that the Commissioners can leverage their networks, their friends, and any events that they attend, and bring these outreach materials, or even place them in your, you know, your, your work areas or events that you attend. And that would be probably a way to help us expand our reach more than you coming to something that we're already staffing. So we have the materials here, and they're also on our website. And I'm glad to take any questions on that. Then also attached to the Director's Report is the Election Plan, which the Commission would need to review and approve prior to the election. And also, there's a waiver that's attached to my Director's Report. And that waiver is, is a, is a, is a release of the prohibition of city employees assisting the department in conducting the election. And that's part of the Charter Amendment that created the Elections Commission. There was, there was language that prohibited city employees from assisting the department. In the past, we've, we've had personnel from other departments help us with the uploading of the results from the memory cartridges, from memory device, or memory cards from each polling place. This election, we're going to do that work ourselves, so we don't have a need for the extra personnel from other departments. But, so this is more of a general waiver of the prohibition, and primarily, we would appreciate any city employees who are bilingual, in Chinese fashion, Filipino especially, to, to volunteer as poll workers for Election Day. So that's the purpose of this waiver. Then hopefully, the Commission will approve the waiver, then it would be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for, for their final approval. Then we could actually enlist city employees to, to work as, to volunteer as, as poll workers. Then also attached to, it's incorporated in my Director's Report and attached to the Director's Report is information on the Chinese character-based names, that, which was a topic recently as we went in, with the nomination period. And it might be just, in a way, better to take questions on that. But primarily, I want to say that the department didn't change any, any requirements around the documentation or substantiation that potential candidates could submit to verify their use of a character-based name. But the Board, the Board Supervisors did pass a resolution unanimously requesting that the department adopt a state law that incorporates two-year timeframe for candidates to be using a character-based, Chinese character-based name. But the, the Board can't change local law through, through a resolution. They can only do through, do so through ordinance. I don't know the Board's approach. I wasn't a part of any conversations on, on the Board introducing and discussing and passing the, the resolution. But the department considered the request, and although the local law, the MEC Section 401, does not have a timeframe attached to it, the, the state law has a timeframe of two years, we determined we could, we could pass a, a standard, or we could implement a standard of two years to, to mirror the state timeframe, which we implemented for this past election, for this past nomination period. So the, the document, the, the types of documents themselves never changed. There was no, we're, it's a very, very liberal, low threshold for people to submit documentation in regards to their use of a character-based name. So the only thing that was different was that the timeframe, where there's no timeframe stated in local law, there's now a two-year standard, a standard of two years that we implemented. And then going forward, I will go to the Board and have them formally adopt a two-year timeframe in the local code as well. So I think I'll just take questions from there, so.
Director Arns, just in order of operations, I actually had one clarifying question. The election plan, we need to approve prior to the March election, correct? So recognizing, I don't know if all the other Commissioners were able to get through the 70 pages of the election plan yet, but would it be possible for us to agendize that again at our next Commission meeting as well? Or are you hoping to have the review and approval today? Or are you hoping to have the review and approval today?
Procedurally, February is fine. I mean, the election's continuing.
Right.
So this is basically a statement, an overview of what we're doing to implement the election, to conduct the election. So the election will continue, even if you wait until February to approve the plan.
Thank you. So what I had in mind was if folks were able to get through it at length, I think let's try to get through it today. If folks have continued questions, we can roll it into February. But for the purposes of this conversation, let's start with the Director's Report, questions pertaining to the Director's Report and the specific items that he mentioned around outreach and the waiver, and, well, I'll come back to labor, and the Chinese character names and whatnot. And then let's move into the election review, and if we need to, we can always extend. But we do need to take action on the waiver. So I think let's start with our thoughts, questions for the Director about the report, then move to the waiver, then move to the election plan, if that sounds good to everyone. Because I think it's a lot to tackle all at once. Is that, does that work for you? Okay. Anything else, Director Arns, before I hand it over to the, thank you. Okay. Yes, Vice President Dradonik.
Thank you, President Stone. Yeah, thank you for your report, Director Arns. I just had one question about the Chinese character-based name.
I think we're on the waiver right now. Aren't we in the waiver?
We'll do the report questions first, then we'll take action on the waiver.
All right.
Yeah, but I first wanted to mention that I did see one of the department advertisements on one of the bus stops, which was very cool. I saw it on 24th Street, and it was very prominent. You know, I was biking by, so good work on that. Is that the first year you've done that design, or?
The design, yeah.
Yeah.
Changes every election, pretty much.
Yeah. And so on the character-based name, I just wanted to get clarity on one part of it because I knew you weren't here last month. But so just to kind of summarize, and then maybe you can tell me if I'm correct. So the current ordinance, it gives you a little bit of discretion in what standards you want to apply for, you know, whether to adopt the names, which includes the timeframe. Is that correct?
So the MEC has no timeframe?
Yep, so it gives you discretion on what timeframe to adopt. And then also, related to that, you're not required to have the Board, if you decided on a certain timeframe, you're not required to have the Board incorporate that into the law, but it's your preference, right? So that you don't?
Yeah, it's better to formalize the timeframe in ordinance rather than have it be a policy.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I guess my one point of confusion was, at the last meeting, the materials that were part of the packet said that you could change the timeframe. And then, but there was an article in the San Francisco Standard from like the week before saying that you had already changed it. And it was from December 4th. And do you know the article I'm talking about?
I don't.
Yeah, so there was an article on December 4th saying that some of the candidates were complaining that, you know, the two-year requirement had been implemented. But then in the materials to the Commission, it said that you were, it didn't mention that you had already changed it. So were you, did you change it like in early December or in November or?
No.
The timeframe?
Mid to late December.
Okay.
After the 4th, for sure.
So how did the candidates know that it was two years or you hadn't told them at that point or?
It was more based on the information that provided to us. So if candidates didn't provide information to us, that would reach back two years and we contacted them.
Okay, so then it was later in the month that you decided to go for the two-year timeframe?
Correct.
Okay, I got you. That clears it up for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Thank you, President.
I had mute.
Thank you, President Stone. Thank you, Director Arns, for your comprehensive report and your awesome election plan. Question, you indicated in here, 3A, that you are continuing to hire and onboard about 200 temporary employees. And so you indicated that, I think, that 70% of those are returning of the 200? I don't know if I read that in this report or the other one or the election plan.
I don't think it's 70%.
I read it in here somewhere.
Not in all instances, maybe in some areas, but not in all instances. Like the people that will be doing the ballot distribution, the work with the ballots, they're removing of the cards from the envelopes and that work, they're mostly, as we move through the election cycle, they're going to be mostly new personnel.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're still hiring because I just, I am telling people that you're hiring.
Oh, yeah.
And they've applied and they've gotten acknowledgement from DHR, but they've heard nothing after that. And it's been over a month, that's why I asked.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and that's, I can't remember, I think it was the election plan where we indicated that we're hiring in phases, so it's not all at once, so that we can actually accommodate the workload better. But also, just the nature of the city's processes.
Yes, I understand that.
It's just, and that's, there's like the advertisement period, you know, and then there's the, then even if we bring someone in for interview, there's the onboarding. So if someone has applied and they've been acknowledged by DHR, doesn't mean that we're not interested or may not contact them, it's just a matter, just depending where things are in the city's processes and also where we are within our hiring cycle for specific positions, depending on what they applied for.
Okay, okay. I will let them know that because I am actually, I told another person the other day to apply. So I mean, anybody that I know that's kind of, you know, because I figure you need good people.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if there's a job announcement still on DHR site, then that position, those positions are still open.
Great, okay. Thank you, and thank you again for your comprehensive reporting.
Commissioner Parker.
Thank you, as always. Perhaps all of us kind of nerd out on this stuff because that's why we're on this Commission, but reading your report, I just was getting so excited because it's, I don't know, elections are, I like them a lot.
I hope so.
I know, I'm like, I probably didn't say that in this room, everybody feels the same way. But, you know, Election Day, putting on the sticker after I vote, I just love it. So anyway, thank you. So it was fun to read it. I, let's see, one thing, I had a question, which I answered myself, and I'm going to just share for the public's benefit. I had a question when I was reading, is where the public could find the list of the 37 ballot drop boxes that would be open starting in a couple of weeks. But again, I answered my own question, and so I just want to share with the public, I actually did find it fairly easy to find. If you go to the department's website on the Return Your Ballot page, there's a map of drop boxes where you can find those if you want to drop your ballot off before Election Day. And appreciate also the packets that you put together. And related to that, you know, in your absence last month, when we had, you know, I appreciated the suggestions of how we could be involved, which I realize this is part of that. And then there was one other item in that shortlist, and so I just want to make sure that this is what you were speaking to earlier, that said that commissioners could help place election door hangers on local residencies with no currently registered voters or election posters or utility, on utility infrastructure neighborhoods with below-average historical turnout. And so when you said we're pretty staffed and events and things like that, were you referring to that also? Or is this still an area you would appreciate Commissioner help on?
We would appreciate help on that, actually, yeah.
So you want to show them your goodies you brought us?
I don't think that's the same thing, isn't it?
No, it'd be similar, but yeah.
So if you could just provide more information on like how we might be helpful on that particular item, I would be interested in hearing that. And then I think that's the only question I had. The rest was just enthusiasm and thanks.
I mean, essentially, those areas of the map, it's also these bags. But that was in the election plan, indicates like the greenish-yellowish areas of the city, those are the areas that we would want to be placing the hangers. And then, and we're still organizing our personnel ourselves to do that work. So if there's an area that you'd be interested in, you know, you go let me know, so.
Great.
How much you can carry.
That's great. I mean, I like walking areas and doing that, so happy to reach out to you.
All right, that's great, thank you.
Commissioner Dai.
Director Arns, thank you. We're always in an awkward line of sight here. I wanted to thank you for coming up with a creative solution to the challenges that Chinese candidates were having with their own names. As we didn't have that chance to discuss it with you at the last meeting, but I'm glad that you came up with a solution that was acceptable, that the policy that was trying to guard against cultural appropriation was actually causing a problem with people who had the culture. And so coming up with a solution that, you know, dealt with the intent of the legislation, I think shows good judgment, and I appreciate that. And also, as a fellow elections nerd, I always appreciate your very detailed elections plan. I, as usual, enjoyed the taglines that your staff came up with. I also like the clever, you know, reuse of graphics of the "I voted" stickers, that it's being used for, you know, other parts of the campaign. And I really like the kind of evidence-based tactics that you're working on to try to increase voter registration, which of course is one of the Elections Commission's high priorities. So appreciated seeing that, you know, I vote for my family, I vote for my community, I vote for the future. I think that's fabulous and, you know, hits a lot of the key demographics that are underrepresented. So I just wanted to thank you for your work.
I'll jump in. I guess we're gonna just do it all, the election plan and the Director's Report. I had a couple of things. So I just wanted to second Commissioner Dai's comment about the solution for Chinese names. I know the department goes above and beyond to try and make the process itself easier, to not be a roadblock for candidates trying to get on the ballot. And I know, I just wanted to give kudos to the department for that. And if, you know, there are other issues that come up with concerns, I think it shows that there is obviously the Commission, if folks have real, you know, if there's a big issue, but I think it shows that the department resolved this in a way that is actually fair and also keeping the lens on how to support, how to keep, how to support folks. So I just wanted to add some kudos to that. And I actually wanted a point of clarification about Commissioner Parker, your question, you said it was separate from the things that Director Arns brought, so I think I misunderstood. What was your original question to him?
So in his Director's Report for December?
Right.
There were three ways commissioners could help. And the one, it was number two of the three ways, and it was putting election door hangers on residences. And when I looked at his list of what was included in this packet in his report, it didn't look like that's exactly what this, it looked like a different thing because the other, because the number one thing in last month's report said to distribute election packets containing registration forms, brochures, poll worker applications, et cetera. So I took that as mostly meeting that need, right? Did I read it correctly? Yeah, that first item is mostly, that these packets are mostly the first item in that list of three, and the second item is a little distinct, which we just discussed.
Okay, got it. That was a very detailed, like you were much more detailed about that. I just said, oh, great, here are all the things. Thank you for clarifying. The, I had a couple of questions pertaining to specific areas of the Director's Report. So what, and you may not know this off the top of your head, Director Arns, what is the participation rate of overseas voters? Because I actually was surprised to see that the number of overseas eligible is so high. And I know that participation rate of overseas voters at a national level is like tiny for a variety of reasons. So I'm curious what the participation of those folks is in terms of registration and also returning their ballots, even though they vote, I know electronically, yes, yeah.
Most.
Most of the time.
They still fax.
Fax, wow.
Yeah, so.
Imagine that.
There, well, the potential registered overseas voters, I don't know that number. I don't think anyone does. As far as participation rates, it depends on the election. Some elections, like the special elections we had in 2022, we had pretty much a low turnout with the overseas, military overseas voters. But then when you get into the presidential cycle, the number gets higher. And I think for the November 2020 election, for instance, I think the overseas voter turnout was very similar to what we had here in San Francisco, like in the 80-some percentiles.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We were getting flooded with faxes.
From overseas?
Yeah.
I read some report recently, I would have to go back and look, that the national, the national level is like under 10%.
No, no.
No? Okay, must have had a different.
For a special election, maybe, but even that sounds low for San Francisco, but for the presidential cycle, the primary will be, oh, I don't know, it's hard to say, but the primary turnout likely will be lower than the general election. The general election will have a very, very solid turnout.
The number I had is in the 2022, so take that, it's different from a presidential cycle, but the voting rates for overseas citizens and domestic voters, 3.4% of overseas voters returned a ballot in 2022, 3.4%, which is crazy. So anyways, interesting and good to hear, good to hear we have so much participation. That's definitely great. One other call out I wanted to mention, especially pertaining to poll workers and now understanding a different perspective around kind of where the numbers are at, because it said 1,000, has recruited over 1,000 poll workers, obviously needs to get to 2,000, but wanted to just put a plug into the Commission as well, that January 30th is National Poll Worker Recruitment Day. And so I think if there are things that you can pull from the website around how to apply to be a poll worker and share it in your own communities and social channels, networks, just a little plug, they're all available on the website. The poll worker application is on the website, so just a little fact. I also think it's great to see the registration numbers in the Director's Report. Again, really excited that that's being included. I'll talk a little bit more about that as it pertains to the election plan. And then, one question I had about the grantees, in the monthly reports, are they also providing the department feedback? Are they giving you, are you, I mean, you have so much work on the department's level, so, you know, there are so many things that you are managing. I'm just curious if in the monthly reports from the grantees, they're going to be giving the department some data that can help you do things going forward with those communities? Let's say we don't have the budget to do grantee funding and the department has to do that. Are there things that we will be getting from those reports that perhaps could inform the department in future outreach?
Well, they have to quantify their work.
Okay.
So if that's what you mean, but if you mean more like process or procedures or practices, we do have an after-grant meeting with the grantees, so we do get their feedback from them, and whatever input they want to provide to us, we certainly take it seriously.
Awesome. Yeah, I was more just wondering, learning about, because they are specifically working in their own respective communities, that there are community-based insights that the department can use when engaging in work or outreach with those specific communities. So I think you answered that. That's great. And then moving along, we talked about all of those things. And then moving along, we talked about all of those things. I, as it pertains to the director's report, I just wanted to say what an incredible election plan you put together. And on a very selfish note, I was very happy to see some of these things around voter, the un, the eligible, unregistered voters and the map and all of the prioritization around that. I just wanted to say a huge thank you to these effort, for these efforts. I know it's a commission priority. It's obviously been something I've been pushing on you for a while that I, I think that you already are so committed to, but seeing this renewed push ahead of March is really amazing. So thank you so much for that. I also agree, want to second Commissioner Dai's comment about the messaging and the, and I think Vice President Jervonik made a comment about it as well, around the, the messages about why people should vote. I think those are awesome and agreed, also very meaningful in a, for diverse communities, which is great. I did have a couple of points. I was able to get through the full, the full report. I also wanted to say a couple of other pieces around efforts with specific communities that are vulnerable. So obviously we've talked about on this, on this commission, folks who are system impacted. I also just talked about unregistered, but eligible voters we talked about, but also the direct outreach that is being done in single-room occupancy hotels, shelters, navigation centers, community centers, and working specifically with food pantries and folks on the SNAP side of things. I think all of that is really, really great and it shows a commitment to really being in community and making people aware of their power to participate in our election. So I just really wanted to give a huge, a huge shout out to you and the department for this. I also wanted to add a shout out again, more praise of the data that, and the dashboard that you are working on. I think giving members of the public access to these data sets and the data set, the data over time as well. The historical trend is awesome. It's something I think we talked about a few months ago that I, I believe I had mentioned. I, I reached out to someone from Mission Local, asking if they could include some of these, some of these numbers in maps that they already use to talk about other issues in the city. So that, you know, if folks aren't automatically thinking, oh, let me go check out what the Department of Elections is, are doing, they're more likely to be checking out what their local newspaper is, has available. So I think that's, that is something that as a commission can also continue to support now that I'm seeing all this amazing work. To that end, I did have one question about the ad campaign in local media. And I was curious, I know it says print media, but I'm curious if, about some of the local newspapers and if, and how those were chosen. I saw the Marina Times, the SF Weekly, SF Examiner, SF Bayview, Sunset Beacon. I did not see Mission Local. Obviously I didn't see the SF Chronicle, but I was just curious, I know some of these are more neighborhood specific. Curious if you could talk a little bit about Mission Local or other news outlets that you had engaged. But otherwise, I just wanted to say as a final, just great work. Thank you so much. And I think I'm excited to see the results of all of your hard work on these efforts.
So on the, and the ads, so the newspapers are actual papers, so the neighborhood, their neighborhood hard copy paper, that's what you're giving off, yeah?
Yeah.
And so that's, that's the reason you, part of the reason you see that list, plus they reach certain populations. We, we don't advertise on, on every online newspaper. Certainly we can reach out to Mission Local and see if, we also have to consider what they're, you know, who they reach.
Sure.
And maybe the who, the Mission Local, any outreach on a Mission Local, if, if it would meet an audience as we were getting another, another avenue. We're not going to pay double for that potentially. So yeah, we, we try to balance the, the cash that we have with who we can reach and then the methods. And we do put more effort into non-traditional media because there's a bit more cost there than we do the traditional media, like even K T U D is on that list, if you've noticed, so.
Yeah, I did. Thank you. I think just that being a question answered for public knowledge is just helpful. There was one other comment that I did want to make, which is less a concern about March than it is about November, that I wanted to just kind of flag, is around the timing of results reporting. And I know we've talked about this on the commission. A, it being a priority this year, but B, also just in years past, concerns around understanding in the public and in the media about results reporting and making sure that folks actually understand the process of what gets counted when. So for example, the department is going to report on, you know, and I'm looking at page 63 of 69. You know, the, the vote by mail ballots received before election day is on election night. And then we move to the polling places, but if more than 80% of folks in San Francisco are voting by mail, and let's say they all drop them off, drop them off at not within the timeframe to be included in that 8:45 PM cutoff, then they won't be counted, those won't be included in the results for another day or two days, rather. And so making sure the public is aware of that and doesn't get ahead of themselves, not the public, the media maybe, in calling results before the actual votes have been counted. So just more of a flag that we've seen, we saw this happen in previous elections over the last couple of years. And something I think we should talk about as a body leading up to November, less concerned about it, although may still be of concern in March. I think definitely something in November we should pay attention to. And that, that's all from me on the director's report and the election plan. Anyone else want to make comment about either of those items before we move to the waiver? Yes, Vice President Jervonik?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one more thing about the Chinese character-based name policy. We've been talking about nerding out a lot, but if, if people want to nerd out more on the, the new policy, if you go to the page for this, the board resolution that was from October, and the memo that Director Arns provided in the packet, it's a three-page memo. But if you go to the resolution page for the board, there's a, a longer eight-page memo that the director sent to Supervisor Chan that has a little bit more background. It has a copy of the forms that the Secretary of State recommends for state-based statewide candidates, as well as the form that local candidates fill out. So it's a little bit more background. Is that correct, Director Arns? Okay, so that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. There are comments from commissioners? Okay. Unless folks have questions about the waiver, I move that we approve the director's waiver immediately. Does anyone have comments or, or were you going to say?
I was going to second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Okay. Let's move to public comment before we take a vote on approving the director's waiver. And just to clarify for the public, we are voting to approve the waiver that allows city employees to assist the Department of Elections with the March 2024 presidential primary election.
There are no public commenters.
I also want to make sure I didn't mislead the public, that this is not just on the waiver. This is public comment on the director's report, the March 2024 election plan and the waiver. Okay. So Secretary Davis, will you please call the roll call for the vote on the waiver?
President Stone.
Yes.
Vice President Jervonik.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernhols.
Yes.
Commissioner Dai.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Yes.
Commissioner LaVolsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Parker.
Yes.
President Stone, with all seven voting yes, you have your call.
Excellent. Well. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Director Arns. The waiver has been approved. And we will now move to, as I mentioned earlier, agenda item number six, 2023-2024 Elections Commission Policies and Priorities Review. Discussion and Possible Action on the Election Commission's Current Policies and Priorities for the Commission and Department of Elections per the Charter section.
Point of order. Did we want to approve the elections plan?
That's a good idea. Sure, if you'd like to. So we did already close out agenda item number five, but we, excuse me, six, four. But sure, we can go back. Let's reopen agenda item number four. Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to move that we approve the, the director's plan for 2024.
Since we did not, since we already took public comment, I don't think we need to take public comment again. Secretary Davis, will you call the roll call vote for the March 2024 election? And thank you, Commissioner Dai. I appreciate that.
President Stone.
Yes.
Vice President Jervonik.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernhols. Commissioner Bernhols?
Yes.
The, we're taking a vote on the, the director's plan for March?
Yes, I vote, yeah, I didn't hear the first part, the audio is going in and out, but yes, I would, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dai.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Yes.
Commissioner LaVolsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Parker.
Yes.
That's all seven yes for that.
Excellent. So thank you, Commissioner Dai, again, and thank you, Director Arns, and for, for putting that together, very robust elections plan. And also congrats on not having to agendize that again next month. Okay, now we actually are closing agenda item number four and moving to agenda item number six, 2023-2024 Elections Commission Policies and Priorities Review. I'm not going to restate the piece I already stated. So let's go straight into, let's go straight into this topic. I will, I believe, first hand it over to, to Vice President Jervonik, if you want to start on, since you have, you've, you authored two of the priorities.
Okay, sure.
I guess I put you on the spot there. Hope you don't mind.
Yeah, well, I thought for this item, it would make sense, unless you had a different idea, maybe you could just ask Director Arns, what, if he's had a chance to think about the different policies and what his plans are for them, and then maybe we can respond with questions or?
Sure. I mean, I, as it pertains to the voter registration policy priority, I was going to give kind of my sense, my perception of where that stands, less so than having the director do so, but if folks have different, if folks have different. I also didn't ask the director to prepare certain responses, so if you would like to ask certain questions, I think we can do that. I, I don't have a specific vision. I just had prepared my specific priority.
Okay, sure. Should, should I just do, maybe I'll just, do I want to alternate? Maybe I can do the ranked choice voting and then, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, so the first policy listed in the agenda is the ranked choice voting results reporting priority. And I know Director Arns, we've talked about this in the past at previous meetings, and you had said that you weren't really going to work on it until after the March election. So I assume, I assume there's probably nothing more for you to say on this, or have you done any research or anything, or?
We, well, we indicated that we would use the program that you developed.
Oh, you are going to? Okay, great.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so then, yeah, I think there isn't a whole lot more to add. I mean, I, I guess I could mention two small things. One, one thing is I was doing some random, I was looking around at other jurisdictions that use ranked choice voting, and I saw that Salt Lake City, who uses ranked choice voting, they also use Dominion, and they, they do something similar where they, they're able to display the ranked choice voting results in their own custom way. So they were able to take the Dominion results and then reformat those. So that's another example. And, and then I could also just mention to the commission that I, I was planning on adding the, the tool tips to the results page where if you hover over certain terms like, you know, exhausted ballots or, what's another one, continuing ballots, it would show the definition. So that's something that, you know, the, the department could benefit from too. And, but I think there's not much else to say on this unless other people have comments or questions.
I, yes, Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Just a point of clarification. Are you, are you, you mentioned the hovering over for the terms. You're actually going to implement that?
Yes.
Okay, because that is great. I'm always trying to think, remember what they mean. And, and I understand ranked choice voting, so imagine for the people who don't.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll somehow communicate that to this body once I'm off the commission, you know, when, when I get around to it, and I'll let the director know as well.
I had one point of clarification. So the Director Arns, you said that you are going to adopt it. Is that for March or for November?
No, for November.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Did any other commissioners have feedback on that item?
Yeah, Director Arns, we can be in touch if, once you get around to it, if you have questions or if there's anything missing or anything. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. I guess we can move to voter registration. So yeah, as I said, I didn't ask Director Arns to put anything together on this one, mostly because I think the election plan and the director's report speaks for themselves. They, if you look back on the commission's priorities and you look at the second, no, the last page, the, it talks about potential tactics and I, my, when, in preparing for today's meeting, I just did a, a brief and review of what was in there and refreshed my memory on what really we had talked about and where we stand currently. And I think that the department is actually achieving, is achieving all of these items. Not only assessing the data, but also working to get the data in the first place. But I think the map and the targeted outreach and the community grants all speak to, speak to this effort. I also think the multi, the multi-method approach, multi-channel and multi-method approach to getting folks to think about registering to vote is, speaks to all these other tactics that we had talked about under, as a sub-bullets to agenda, to the tactic, first tactic of assessing data. And then the second piece, the director immediately data. And then the second piece the director immediately implemented, which is incorporating data and registration rates in the director's report. And not only is it, have those items been included in the director's report, they've also been updated on the, the dashboard that the department has been updating. And so we do have total registrations on the director's report, but then we also have the drill downs of the districts on that dashboard. What is the dashboard called? Not the, what is it called?
Edata.
Edata. Sorry?
Edata.
Eden?
Edata.
Edada, sorry.
Data.
Data. Okay, thank you. Apparently I'm hard of hearing today. Well, most days, actually. But I appreciate everyone saying it in unison for me. So we, you can do that drill down, and the director is including the tactics, some of the tactics employed as well in the director's report. So I feel really marching toward that. I also think that the director has helped the commission in thinking about how we can make progress on this policy priority by bringing the materials today, and then also answering Commissioner Parker's specific question with resources. As the director already said, that, you know, well, let me take a step back. It had been talked about in previous commission meetings that we could join some of the voter registration drives, or attend some of the events that the department's already doing, but actually, as the director said today, and I just wanted to re-elevate it, that we don't actually need to duplicate their efforts, but rather expand to our own networks and our own communities. And so I think we should, as a commission, continue to talk about how we can do that, whether it's through what Commissioner Parker was saying, getting those door hangers and using the map that the director provided to target the specific communities that have low registration rates and eligible. I think that's, that's a good next step. There are two other pieces of that, actually, three other pieces of that I think, I believe we've talked about before, that I think we can continue to talk about as a body, and would like to continue to talk about as a body, is engaging our appointing authorities and their communities and their departments about folks that they're working with to help expand our efforts. There are other intergovernmental departments, so the, I've engaged myself with members of the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs, who already do really amazing work in communities, to engage them on all sorts of issues and support resources that are from the city. And so I think that's another department, or other types of departments, where we can just proactively make sure the folks who are out there in the communities have these resources. So I think, knowing that we've already hit some of our, our goals that were in that, in the priority document, I'd like to see in future conversations, us talking about ways in which we, as a body, are individually supporting these outreach efforts around March, but then again, in, leading up to November. And the last item of that, which is separate, is I'd love to add a button on our website to register to vote. You know, just a link that says, here's where to register to vote, and it can connect to the department's page. I also think we could be providing a link to the dashboard on our website as well. So website updates on our end can be a little bit slower, but these are all things that the commission, I believe, can continue to, to do and support. I welcome folks' comments, feedback, concerns about all of these items.
Quick comment. So we can provide, provide a route of where to go for the hangers, so.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Thank you. I've been doing the mic on and off all evening, just learning how to do it. Thank you, President Stone, for your hard work on this initiative. I just wanted to share some information that I got yesterday. I'm part of a, sort of a mastermind group in public relations, and there was some information that was presented about the decline of traditional media. And this individual, who has been studying it for years, said, I'm not even going to talk about this as something that's happening. It's happened. And they're, they're really the, and of course, this is upsetting to me, because I'm a big media person, and I really love traditional media. But anyway, I just accepting it. And he then brought up these different studies that have been done about where people are getting their news, and according to the age group, and I can't tell you off the top of my head everything, but one thing that struck, that jumped out at me is that, first of all, a lot of people don't pay attention to the news, which is really concerning. So we're trying to get information out about issues, or, or, or just, just letting people know that it's, you know, to vote and to care about candidates, and they're not even paying attention to the news. We have a problem. But here's the second thing, is that most, 38%, and it's a growing number, and this is going to be a controversial thing that I'm going to bring up, get their news from TikTok, which of course it's controversial, and we don't even know if TikTok will be in existence after the next election. The fellow that was giving the webinar indicated he thinks it might get sold. But just something to think about, if 38% of the kids that are under the age of 25 are getting their news from TikTok, we may want to think about a way to talk about registering to vote on TikTok. There are departments in the city that put videos on TikTok. They're short videos, they're fun, and it's just, I mean, social is one of the, one of the vehicles that you're looking at. And I just, you know, you don't want to throw good money, you know, away by putting it into something that people aren't paying attention to. And I think we have to, whether we like it or not, we have to look at where, what watercooler people are hanging out at, and meet them there. So that may be an opportunity in the coming year. They, even, even the over 65s, 1% to 3% of that group, those are the numbers that I, that I remember, are, get their news from TikTok. And then the, another growing demographic is those from 25 to 34, more of them are. As far as the other social media platforms, Threads and Facebook are responsible for a lot of this decline in interest in news, because they have intentionally adopted a new policy where they're not referring people to news organizations. So there's less of an emphasis on news gathering and news information. And of course, if people are hanging out on social media, they're not going to be clicking on headlines on those platforms, because they're no longer making them available. Amazingly, X had only declined five points in terms of people getting their news from there, which I thought was interesting, because it's, I, I'm not on there, but I was on Twitter. So, and, and I do, and I will say, I miss it, because for breaking news, I think it's really valuable. And then I, they did talk about some other platforms, but I do want to share that information, because it is something that we have to pay attention to, because if that's where people are getting their information, then the elections department needs to be there promoting voter registration, and this group needs to think about that, too. You do look disappointed. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just.
The boomer telling, telling the millennial.
No, I was just going to say, thank you for keeping us all awake through the rest of the night with our fears about the future of the world.
You and my kids been upset when I tell them this. They are, no, that can't be true.
No, you said nothing I don't already know. I just tried to suppress those fears of our existential crises. Commissioner Dai.
Yeah, I was just going to add on to that comment. It's, it's actually a really frightening number. It's much higher than that, if you take it across section of how many people get their news from social media. I was just thinking, you know, the campaign you did for Going Green, which had that nice, you know, short video, and then you've got these, you know, this catchy messaging and this cute rhyming. It's actually, the stuff you have is, I think, with a little bit of work, you could do a very quick TikTok video and get that out quickly, get some of the creative folks to, to work on that, because like I said, you've already got rhyming stuff, right? Just add a little dance, and you're there. I'm not suggesting you do the dance, but maybe some of, maybe some of the department.
President Stone, I think.
No, no, no one wants to see that.
I'm just commenting. The department already does a lot of great, you know, kind of catchy, you know, short messaging. So it's actually a good medium for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Vice President Jervanik.
Yeah, or if the department doesn't want to do it, you could always host a contest. Other people could, you know, do it. So, get lots of people.
Anyone else? Okay. Are folks open to us continuing the, oh, yes, Commissioner Parker.
Just going to undo it. I was trying to decide if I should ask anything. I was just thinking about, you know, some of the ways, some of the things you were suggesting, President Stone, about, you know, engaging our appointing authorities, expanding our efforts and things like that. And so it just made me think, I know Director Ernst, you've talked a lot about how you've worked with high schoolers and, and things, engaging them around voter registration, poll working, things like that. And I'm realizing, I'm not sure, have you also had any conversation with the school district in the past about voter registration of families and caregivers in the school district? Has there, has the department ever asked them to put out anything in like their, their Wednesday packets and things like that?
We have in the past. I don't, we haven't for this election. And then, more recently, it's been around non-citizen voting?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That might be, I mean, that's such a, that's such a large number of people in one spot. So it just made me think, because my appointing authorities, the school board, is this something that I could help with, you know, is, is reaching and having them put something in their, in their Wednesday envelope, kind of packet that goes out to all the schools. If you hadn't already done something, that's something I could help with. So it's a big group. So anyway, thank you for the thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. Great. So if folks are open to it, I think we'll just continue the, I might plan to just agendize this again, not, or whomever, we'll agendize this again, so that we can keep talking about ways in which the commission can continue to support, whether it's through our appointing authorities or our networks, taking materials from the department to keep ourselves accountable. I think that would be good. That is it on my priority. Vice President Jervanik, do you want to finish us out?
Sure. So move to the third priority, which is the open source voting priority. And for this one, I just thought I would preface it with something else that's relevant, which is, you know, from the director's report, we see that the budget is, is going to be, become a big issue this year and then in future years. And we've heard from advocates that open source system could be as, as, save the department as much as 50% on its voting system contract each year. And if the department has a, an annual budget around $20 million, and our current voting system contract is $2 million a year, like a 50% savings would be $1 million, which, which would be 5% of the department's budget. So if the mayor's asking departments to reduce their budget by, you know, 5% to 8% per year, this could be a potential way for the department to meet that goal without affecting voter services or department staff. So I think it's a really good thing to work towards, because it could be a huge savings to the department, which is just going to become more, much harder to meet, you know, with each year that passes. So I, there were a couple of things I wanted to mention about this topic in addition to that, but I thought I would just give Director Ernst a chance to share. I know Director Ernst did send me an email towards the end of last month, but I'll, I can let him mention that. But in November, I had asked if you had had a chance to think about this priority, and I thought I would just give you a chance to let the commission know, you know, what, what you're thinking for this next year in terms of the two bullet points that we had put in the document, and.
So I did email you asking for a list of contacts of open source vendors, and then I have to go through the information you gave me, because there weren't a lot of vendors on that list that I, that I noticed. But then I actually have questions for the commission on this priority, more than I have thought about it. So the, the commission wants the department to forward the commission's priority to the vendors, and ask the vendors how much they need from the city financially, and then also what the department can do to help these vendors get certified? Is that correct?
So let me pull up the document here. So basically, the city has had a long, a longstanding policy for the, the city to work with organizations to, to develop an open source voting system that the city can use. So this, this commission policy and department policy was an attempt to, to like meet that city policy. So the idea was that there are potentially, you know, many organizations out in the country that would be willing to partner with the city to help develop, or to develop an open source voting system that the city can use. But, but we don't, the city doesn't know what, what these organizations need until we ask them. So the idea was that if you send an email out to not just vendors, but organizations, because some of these individuals might not be associated with, like necessarily someone that's labeled a vendor. But if we hear back from them and say like, hey, you know, we, we would be willing to partner with you for, you know, for free, if you, we need you to answer these questions, and then we could develop the system for you, and if you can try it out, you know, we will do this for you. Or maybe they would say, you know, we can do this for you for $50,000 or $100,000, or maybe it's $0. Like in the past, Voting Works offered to do something for $0. So the idea was that if you send out an outreach email just saying like, you know, hey, the city has had this policy to work with an organization, and is this something you can help us with? And what would you need from us? So it's kind of an open-ended query, and then based on what you get back, it can help you decide, you know, whether any of these seem promising.
Then how much of this department's resources would you think we would need to commit to this?
Well, that's, that's what's the beauty of it. You don't need to commit to anything just to send the email out. I mean, it's, you, you would get the information back, and maybe you'll get, you know, a few responses, and you can share those with the commission. And then using that information, you can kind of work from there. Like maybe, maybe some of the responses require very little from the department, or maybe some require more. But it would at least give you and the commission the information about what the options are, to, to kind of work towards the city policy of partnering with a, an organization. I know, I know, just historically, one of the examples that I know you've mentioned is, the department uses a, an envelope sorter from a vendor. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there was a time where you did a pilot with them, right, where they, they made some changes to their sorter to, so the department could use it? Is that correct?
Right, but we didn't help them develop their sorter.
Well, but I mean, it's, it was a pilot, though, that they.
But they brought the product that we used for the election.
Yeah, so, so the idea is that until you, until you ask the organizations, we don't know what the possibilities are. So, you know, based on this information, you could learn, you know, what are the options? You know, maybe, maybe some of the options would require very little from the department.
But again, how much resources of the department do we commit to? I mean, it's sort of so open-ended, and there's nothing, and there's, how do we, do we have to get a contract with these vendors?
No. Well, this, this initial step here is, it's just to, to ask. You're not committing to anything. You're just, you receive the information, and based on the responses, then you can decide, like, is there anything here that makes sense for the department, so that the department can move forward on this policy? So you're not, you don't need to commit to anything to, to just, to ask.
Well, if we're helping a vendor develop a voting system. Well, if we're helping a vendor develop a voting system, aren't we committing that to that voting system?
Well, you don't... I'm saying you're just asking the question. But like, after you get the responses, then you could decide whether or not you want to partner with any of these organizations. So it... I'm saying that until you have that information, it's hard to kind of discuss this in the abstract, you know? That's... Does that make sense?
Sorry, I was just rereading the sentences. Commissioner Hayden Crowley. You're on mute.
I... I'm just... Point of clarification. I think what Vice President Jedonik is asking, Director Arns, is for you to create maybe a brief scope of work, almost like an RFP, but not, because that would require a lot more. But a scope of work that you would put out to the vendors and/or the organizations describing what your needs are, and can they potentially fulfill them, and what kind of resources are needed on their end to do that. Because I think without any kind of initial query, we are just fumbling in the dark. We have no idea. Like, we're... What I heard Vice President Jedonik say is that experts out there say that we could save $1 million or 50% of the budget if we went to open source voting. Well, how do we really know that? These are just people that are out there. Without some sort of a scope of work and people bidding on it, there, you know, that... There's no way to go from, you know, to move off where we are right now. So... But that's a much bigger thing, I think, Vice President Jedonik, than the resources. I'm just going to put words into what I'm hearing Director Arns say is that he may not have the resources, certainly not right now, and maybe not in this election season, to create a scope of work, no matter how modest, just because all of the resources are dedicated to getting... Putting on free, fair, and functional elections. Perhaps you can work together to create this scope of work. That would be a way forward, but it can't consume a lot of the department's time because they have several priorities. But that's where I would think you would want to go with this, because you can't move forward without a scope of work, and that's what people need to provide a bid on.
But there's nothing to bid on, because there's no funding for it. And there's... I mean, that's the thing. It's a chicken and egg. And what the department needs and what a vendor needs to do is to have their system approved by the Secretary of State's office so that we can use it.
Okay.
I mean, that's what has to happen.
Okay.
And then what I understand Commissioner Jedonik asking is that we're supposed to ask these vendors and organizations what they need as far as funding and whatever resources the department has to get them to be certified. That's the big ask, I think. And I... So that's why I'm trying to clarify what you have in mind. Just asking for information, I mean, that's the first step to committing resources. And that's why I'm kind of getting a sense of what you have in mind as far as the resources to commit to this.
I think the scope of work that, you know, to use Commissioner Hayden Crowley's terminology, I think the scope of work could be just what you said. I think the city, what it needs is a system that's certified and has certain, you know, capabilities, like, you know, ranked choice voting, you know, the certain multi-language ability you need, you know, could be described in a couple of senses. And to say, you know, since 2007 or 2014, the city has wanted a system that we can use that has these capabilities. And we're hoping that an organization can develop it and certify it. You know, what would you need from the city for you to be able to do that? And maybe they'll say, maybe it would require very little on the department's part. Maybe they just need... We need someone that we could, you know, maybe just try it out one day, you know, after every couple of months. You know, try it out for a couple hours. I don't know what they're going to say, but it could be something very easy that doesn't even require much money or any money. You know, it's... But until you put that out there, no one's ever gonna... People aren't going to know to like to tell you what they could do for you, do for the city.
But we need a voting system.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, we don't just need like some software. We need a voting system. And so if someone came forward and replied to the department's request for information, we don't know what they would actually make and if it would be a good system. I mean, we're kind of committing the city to a system that we have no idea if it'd be any good or not. And so that's... So it's not as simple as it sounds, at least in my mind. And I'm not trying to overstate this. But it's not a matter of just getting some information, and then we're going to use, you know, provide a few bucks, and then give some information, and off we go. It has to be a good system.
So... Well, then what is... So like, I know like New Hampshire did something similar. They worked with Voting Works and Dominion, and maybe a third vendor, but they they worked with them. You know, they had certain like interactions where they... The vendors would update their system to like meet certain New Hampshire's requirements. And then they had a day where the vendors came, and they showed the systems. And now, and New Hampshire now has an open source system that they're able to use. And like, they were able to do that process. So that's just an example of one jurisdiction doing it. But I guess until you just let people know, let these organizations know that this is what the department is interested in, it's... You don't really... I mean, you don't know the possibilities. That's kind of to... You want to learn to make the next decision, you need to know what the possibilities are. It's not an RFP. It's just a simple email that could be, you know, a few paragraphs long, which I think...
Commissioner Hayden Crowley, make sure you're unmuted.
I'm hearing a couple different things. I'm just trying to help mediate this here. When you're talking about New Hampshire, it sounds like the state was very much involved. It wasn't handled at a local level, or even if it was implemented at a local level, it was handled, though, at the state level and then implemented at the local level. But it does sound... What I'm hearing from Director Arns is that you have to have an approved system by the state. And that's where we get the chicken before the egg, the egg before the chicken. I think one of... And you've been down this road. It's hard to move forward without the state's participation in it, because for the city to commit money and/or resources, you don't want to invest in something that wouldn't have, you know, the state's blessing, so to speak. And I'm jumping in on this with really very little knowledge, but I'm just trying to move this forward to the, you know, to try and understand it. But I do think it sounds like I can't wrap my head around why all these politicians go out there and say this is something that they're for, and then they do very little to push it forward. But that's kind of typical. So that doesn't surprise me completely.
So... So I think the state, you know, obviously needs to approve the system, but that's something that the vendor would take care of. And I'm not... It's not something that would be on the department's shoulders.
But no, the priority from the commission is that the department would help the vendor, ask the vendors what they need from the department to get certified.
That would be the initial step. So... And then you'd have an array of replies. And then at that point, you could just look at the replies, and then...
But that's the commitment that we're putting forward with that policy that the commission's passed. So the department sends an email to the vendors saying, what can the department do based on this policy priority from the Elections Commission to get your system certified?
Well, let's say that... Let's just say hypothetically, you get six replies from different organizations. And then it would be up to the... And then the commission would have this information, you would have this information, the Board of Supervisors would have this information, the mayor would have this information, and maybe all these different groups, they could say, well, like, two of these six look like they have, you know, really seemed realistic. You know, maybe one of them is asking for $20,000, or maybe one of them is not asking for any money. Maybe they just need a point of contact. And then among all these different stakeholders in the city, the supervisors, the mayor, or the department could... Maybe one of the members of the board says, you know, this is great. This one response was good. Let's put some weight behind it. But without having that initial query, no one really... There's nothing to concrete to pursue. You know, that's... It's just really all you're doing would be doing would just be getting the information, and it could be an input into the city on how it can move forward, you know?
No, but the policy priority from the commission is what resources of the department do the vendors need. And so it's sort of a commitment from the department's side that we're going to commit resources. And that's why I'm asking originally, like, what resources and how much resources are you envisioning the department provide?
I think that would...
A minute, can I make a point of clarification? So I think some of this is actually just language in the priority that might be causing some... Like, I can actually understand where your perception is and also understand... Like, I think I'm getting... I'm understanding a little bit differently now, and you'll have to reconcile if I've gotten it. But my... I think perhaps the language that is most challenging on the side of the director is that there is a kind of subliminal message that implies that the department would allocate resources, whereas the intention of the priority is simply just to say, if I'm understanding correctly, that we would want the... We would want to be able to ask the voting system, the vendors, excuse me, what they would need from us in theory, but not actually have there be any sort of commitment that the department would be... Would do any of that. It is a, in theory, what would you need to accomplish this goal? And I think how it reads might not make that clear. It might imply that it's... That the... There is an ask for there to be a more realistic commitment from the department, when it's just an outreach message of what do you need? What would you need to be able to do this in theory? I think you've also raised that your concern is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that notwithstanding that fact, you believe that asking about it in theory is still one step closer to reality and practical resources being allocated. Is that your concern?
It is.
Okay. And so is your feedback, then, that even asking, putting out there in theory, this is what we would need, is still too close to actually committing resources themselves?
Totally.
It's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all talking in the same way. Yes, Vice President Jedonik, quickly, and then we have actually lots of hands.
Okay. So I'll just pose this question to the commission. Like, if the commission were to ask the board for funding for an initiative, like, until we ask, we would never know how much money to request. You know, that's... It is a chicken and egg. But... So... But I just want to say I do agree with your summary. It's this is in theory, like, if you get six replies back, maybe none of them make sense. Maybe they're all asking for too much, or maybe some of them aren't realistic. So I would say that it's not... You're not committing to anything by just asking, is my reply to that. But I'll let others speak.
Commissioner Dai.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's actually a strong city tradition to ask with zero commitment. I mean, the city puts out RFIs all the time just to create vendor lists with no commitment to hire. So they put out these requests all the time and say, we want to know who's qualified. Here's what we're looking for. And, you know, if you meet our qualifications, we'll put you on a list for the next two years with no...
That's true.
No commitment at all that we're going to hire you. We're just trying to see who's out there. So I think this is essentially the same thing. It's like, city's been trying to look at open source systems, and we've hit this roadblock, right? Because they can't do ranked choice voting, for one, and there are probably some other issues as well. And we need a complete voting system. So we would like to hear from anyone who is seeking to vote, to develop a state, California state-certified, you know, open source system that would meet our requirements. And, you know, we'd like to know who you are and what we would mentally need to do to to help get you across the finish line with no commitment that we're actually going to do it. But, you know, because, you know, the city's not going to pay for your development, but what are the things we could do? It could be as simple as, we need a technical point of contact, you know, as we're developing this to give us feedback. It could be... I have no idea, but I'm making stuff up, right? It could be as simple as that. It could be, you know, we would like the city to, you know, to be an alpha tester, right? When we have finished developing our ranked choice voting module, right? It doesn't have to be in a real election. We would like you to test it and go through your procedures and give us feedback. That could be the, you know, the ask. So it may or may not result in a money ask. It could be... There's no question it would probably be some kind of resource ask, but it may not be that hard for the department to meet. And that's, I think, what Vice President Jedonik's asking for is, let's find out, you know, who might be options, right? And are there any that are worth throwing some resources at, whether it be people resources or time resources, or maybe some money even, to help them get across the finish line? So we have options, because it's in our interest to develop these options at a very... In a cost-effective way, right? So let's find out who's a candidate.
Thanks, Commissioner Dai. Commissioner... Oh, were you going to say something? No, okay. Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
I can't add much to Commissioner Dai. I think she was articulate in what she had to say. I did go through this very issue with the city on a Drupal platform for a website, and they had screened a number of different vendors to qualify them for working on Drupal-based new websites for the city. And I, when I did this for my previous employer with the city, I had to interview from a pre-qualified list of, say, 20 vendors who had met certain qualifications and then were approved. But it was interesting, because at the end of that, I think for... There's a committee. Now, I think the thing that's missing from this entire conversation is the level of bureaucracy that's involved in all of this. It's not a simple thing as Director Arns sending a query out. And I think when he talks about resources, we need to be mindful that it involves multiple departments, Department of Contracting, I mean, lots of different departments. So what we think is a simple letter is never, ever simple, ever. Trust me. But it does happen all the time. So I just think that I think it's definitely worth this commission moving forward, because that seems like a good first step. It's more not in theory. I'd say it's more of an exploratory exercise to see what may be available out there. But again, I think you have to be mindful of the levels of bureaucracy, and it would probably involve working with the DCA first or what... and it would probably involve, um, working with the DCA first, or, or, or whatever, to, to figure out what departments need to check boxes on just even asking for information.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Commissioner Levolce?
Thank you. Director Arntz, given you've said multiple times that resources and allocating resources for the department to do something like a request for information for a, um, open source system, and given that we have an election coming up in March, and we have the presidential election, um, in November, is it possible after the presidential election in November 2024? Is that, we don't have an election for a little while. Is that a time where potentially resources could be allocated to have this inquiry, to kind of look at how we could do this, and how the department could do it, and what resources, um, would be needed? Um, so is it off-election time, when there's, there isn't election going on? There's a little bit of time between? Because I appreciate what you're saying, especially given the budget cuts that have been requested for each department in the city. But is there a possibility of bringing a report to the Elections Commission, um, saying the presidential election is over, we've looked at what it would take to do this, and here's what it would take? So we could have a sense of what resources would be needed? Is that something that could be possible?
I mean, off-year is always better, certainly, than the presidential cycle. And this is kind of growing, from my perspective, from a two-sentence ask to an RFI, which is even bigger. Um, so, but yeah, I, I mean, really, off-year is always better to start investigating and thinking about this. Uh, and, you know, and I'm not against open source. I just, uh, I know that's the perception, uh, from certain people. But it's, I, I, from my perspective, I know once, whatever we issue, there's gonna be an expectation that something's gonna happen next, there's gonna be something else in that. And that's, I get that, that's, that's how it goes. Uh, but not having to go through that during the presidential cycle definitely would be better than, than, it would be better to, for, more advantageous, I think, for everyone concerned not to have the presidential cycles facing us going through all this. Um, and also, from my understanding, Voting Works was planning, getting certified in California. They said originally 2022, I believe. And then, I don't know where they stand now. So potentially, within a year's time, you can have a voting system in California that's open sourced, and that's, that's approved, a secondary state's office. So I don't, it might kind of solve a problem for everybody, I think.
Right, but, but if that isn't the case, just, just for clarification, I'm not saying you create the, the request for information. Just let us know, what would it, what are the resources? What would it take for your department to be able to do that?
An RFI.
Is what I'm saying, yeah.
I'd have to write it. I mean, I mean, the RFI would just take time writing to, to, to do that. Uh, that's why I kind of like the two-sentence, uh, policy priority better.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Then, I mean, then we, right? And just collated and sent to the commission, and you guys could have the permission that way.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, maybe, I'm, I'm tired. I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not saying that you should do an RFI. I'm saying you let us know, because you've said multiple times, there's a lot of resources. You, you don't want to, or I had the indication, you don't want to put too much of the city's resources into doing an RFI. So what I'm saying is, letting us know what it, what would it take for you to be able to do what Chris is saying, which is essentially an RFI. So I'm not saying do it, but to say, after the election, the presidential election, here's what it would take for us to put this, to, to make this happen. Here are the steps, here's the pathway. I would need X number of employees, X number of things. Is that something you would be amenable to? After the presidential election, I want to be clear about that.
It'd be better?
Okay.
Yeah, and the, when I mentioned resources, not so much about the, whatever's issued, it's more if what the ask would be, uh, from the department. And my concern, just from past experience, I, this can't be the issue for the department, especially now, and that's sort of how it's been in the past. No matter where we are in the cycle, this has been the issue. Uh, so if this is going to be, potentially be the issue for the department, it's better to have this happen in off-cycle than during the, the presidential cycles.
Okay, thank you.
And where is, actually, I don't know, do you know where Voting Works is on their system? Because they're certified in California? I'm talking to Commissioner Jorodanik, can I ask him a question?
Oh, yeah, you can just go ahead, Vice President Jorodanik. I just assumed, I didn't, I assumed that you would answer that, yeah.
Yeah, so, I do want to re- reply to, um, Commissioner Levolce's comment, but, yeah, Director Arntz, my understanding from Voting Works, right now, they are not, have not prioritized California. They're, they're prioritizing jurisdictions where there is, um, active interest and willingness to work with them and collaborate with them. So I think, I don't think they're gonna partner with, they're not planning on partnering with us unless they see some interest from San Francisco. So, um, I would say that, right now, they're not, they're not doing anything in California unless we would take some kind of a step to show them that we want to partner with them. So, um, which I think sending out some, doing some kind of outreach like this would, would provide them an opening to partner again. But, um, I think my understanding is that, you know, San Francisco would need to kind of take the first step on that. Um, just on, Commissioner Levolce, on, on your comment, um, yeah, I think an RFI is, is much more work. And I think, um, I think, I think we wanted to avoid asking the department to do an RFI, because it was more work. And, um, I think legally, um, the, the DCA, um, when I was working on this document, the DCAs had said that, you know, we can't ask the department to do an RFI. So I, I would, my preference, and I think in our document, our preference was to do something that was not, did not involve the work of an RFI to allow you to do it, um, you know, easily and quickly. So, and I, I think even the, the email could just say explicitly, you know, this is not a commitment that we will, we are not committing to acting on this information, you know, act on this information, if, if that would make you feel more comfortable. You know, I, one of your concerns was that it might be viewed as a commitment. But I would, I mean, if, if the department was gonna wait until, till next year to, um, do this, it would, I think it would really, um, we would lose a lot of time to, um, you know, we, we would lose a full year on, on, um, preparing for what we could do with that information. But I, I do, I do think that an email could be, it could just be a few paragraphs, and not a couple sentences. I think it could be a few paragraphs. But, um, until the department signals to organizations that it is interested in doing something, I don't think, I don't think anything's gonna happen.
Commissioner Levolce?
I have a question for the CA. Is an email that, um, Vice President Jorodanik is suggesting, if that were to be sent to, um, open source organizations, does that legally bind the department by inquiring and saying, we, we would like more information about your system, what you need for certification? Um, Vice President Jorodanik, help me with the language. Like, basically what you're asking to go into this email, that could theoretically be sent, does that bind the department by doing that?
Good evening, Commissioners, Deputy City Attorney Brad Rusty. From what I understand, what's been discussed about that request for information, it wouldn't bind the department to make any kind of purchase. Um, we would probably want to review how this is set up to make sure there aren't any violations of competitive bidding requirements in the future. For example, giving certain vendors a preference or not equal access. It has to be open to everyone. Like, so, to the extent the department started working with one vendor, not others, there could be issues with competitive bidding. I know that's come up in other contexts. So we just have to make sure we follow the proper process, and we're happy to work with the department on that if this moves forward.
So, so I'm not, I'm not sure, um, really how to proceed. Like, I mean, Director Arntz, based on this conversation, are you, you gonna think about it more, or, um, um, or do you have more to say based on what, what has been said today? Or, um, I, I, I mean, I think part of this policy priority is the commission does want this, you know, issue to move forward. And this has been, this has been going back 16 years now. So, um, you know, we're trying our best to find ways that it, to move it forward. And if you have, um, you know, maybe variations on what we're suggesting, I think we would be, we would love to hear that, too. You know, I think we're, we're doing our best. Um, but if you have other ideas, you know, I think, um, I think we're open to, you know, collaborating together on this issue. But we, we, we don't want this to be any kind of a commitment. We just wanted to get information, so to inform, you know, the next steps, basically. Yeah, so, um, I mean, would it help if, if, um, you know, I or the, the commission were to draft an email? That would, um, you know, be the few paragraphs, and then you could look at it? If you didn't have time to draft the email, would that help you, or?
I'll draft the email that I can share with the Deputy City Attorney's, or City Attorney's Office, and then kind of go from there.
Okay, that would be great. I think that would be very appreciated. Um, okay. I, there was one, there was one related issue that I wanted to, um, mention during this item, because it's related, and that was, um, during the retreat, the commission had a discussion about the, um, the city's current voting system contract with Dominion. And because, um, originally, your plan was to issue an RFP for a voting system in the spring. And, um, one of the commission's concerns was that, um, or informally during our discussions, was that the, um, signing a new voting system contract could delay the, um, you know, that could kind of lock the city into a, a voting system at the exclusion of an open source voting system. So we had a discussion about the possibility of the department extending the, the city's current voting system contract with Dominion instead of issuing a new RFP. And, um, during that retreat, I had shared with the commission that, um, in the past, the department had signed a, a voting system contract back in 2007 that was similar to the one that the department signed in 2018 or 19. And with that contract, it was similar in that it was a four-year contract with two one-year options to extend. I'm, I'm saying this for other people's benefit, because you know it. But after that, the department went to the Board of Supervisors and had the board extend it twice beyond that original, um, you know, was originally stated in the contract. And is there anything that prevents, would prevent the department from doing something similar to that with our current voting system contract? Asking the board to extend it beyond the original six years?
Well, I think one is, does, do we want the same contract, and for the same terms? I mean, if you extend the current contract, you're, you're extending the, the current terms and the, and the current costs. So I, I, I think we have to consider what that means. I don't have an answer right now for that.
Okay, but, but legally, it's a possibility, though, is that?
I'll leave it to Deputy City Attorney, uh, Rusty to discuss that. Um, but it's fine, I'm not going to, I didn't come here today to talk about contracts, and I wouldn't do that in a public session. So, uh, certainly, we can think about, is that, is that the, the commission's formal, uh, recommendation, then?
No, this is a discussion that we had, and I think this is a, it's a question, um, that we had discussed during the retreat. So, um, and it's related to the open source policy priority, which is why I'm asking it today. But, um, I mean, I'll, I'll just ask today, just to kind of move the discussion forward from the commission's perspective. But DCA Rusty, um, like, legally, is it an option for the department to? I, I understand there's choices about whether it makes the most sense, but like, legally, can, would it, would one option be for the department to extend the, the city's current contract with Dominion? If it went to the Board of Supervisors?
Commissioner, I haven't examined that contract with respect to this question. I mean, generally, the board has the authority to pass an ordinance and waive different things, and-
Sorry, would you mind talking into the-
Sure. Generally, the board would have authority to, by ordinance, waive competitive bidding if that's an issue, or, um, other legal requirements that are not, um, imposed by the charter. But with respect to this particular contract, I, I don't know the answer without looking at it more closely.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and the commission did not take any kind of a formal action on this. We were just discussing it, and with the idea that we wanted to keep this, the city's options open for open source.
Well, can I ask, so if the, if there is a, an opportunity to extend the contract, does it commit with the commission and formally recommend that be the case? That that be the course of action?
Well, I mean, I, I would say, informally, the sense was that, and I, I mean, I can let other commissioners speak for themselves, but it seemed like commission, where commissioners were supportive of the idea of extending the existing contract. And, um, I mean, personally, I would, I would support that, because, you know, for the reasons I mentioned, but I, I would, I would hope so, and I would, I would expect it personally, but-
Hi, go ahead, Commissioner Dai. You look like you were gonna say something.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, theoretically, without looking at the details of the contract, it was more about, you know, mitigating the city's risk while leaving the options open. So, as you pointed out, there are lots of reasons to engage in a new contract. Um, but the concern was, if a new contract locks us in for another five years, or whatever the, you know, multi-years, that obviously limits the options for open source. And so, that was just a consideration we were thinking about, is if there is an opportunity to, you know, work with an open source, uh, vendor who's close, you know, to getting certified, we don't want to then sign a five-year contract and, and lock ourselves in and not be able to avail ourselves of that opportunity. So, of course, it depends, right? So, again, we didn't, we weren't looking specifically at the contract. We're just talking about, how can we leave our options open so that we can move toward an open source system, um, without shooting ourselves in the foot? Because, as you said, we need a voting system, right? So, we want to accommodate both. And obviously, you know, what your thoughts are on, on the specific contract, and, and, you know, maybe our opportunity to get concessions from the vendor, um, that matters, too.
So this is, um, Commissioner Stone, I'm just gonna jump in, uh, first, Vice President Jorodanik, if that's okay. Um, I think there are two things I just want to say. One, in response to the director's question. And two, just a point of clarification, also, uh, related to what Commissioner Dai had said, because there's some context that I also want to add for the public in this conversation, which is that the director was, is slated to issue an- which is that the director was, is slated to issue an RFP in this spring for a new voting system. I think that's something we just need to level set on to make sure the public is aware of what we're talking about. And these contracts are much longer than five years. And I think the concern was that if, let's say, an open source system were to be able to be certified in the next two years, three years, four years, that if we were to commit to a new con, a fresh contract, that then we would be locked in for upwards of 10 years potentially or nine years, you know, depending on how we work through that process, knowing the city's requirements around 10-year contracts. So, but these contracts with voting systems like Dominion are very, are long. And I think that was the expressed concern. And then the second piece of that is to answer is related, but also to answer to the, the director's question about if this is the commission's policy. We had talked about it for that exact, for what I just described. We knew that you were going to issue an RFP in the spring, that, meaning in the next, you know, few months in the midst of already a crazy election year, knowing that you were already going to do that and that perhaps there might be movement toward an open source system in California that could get certified, wanting to see if there was an option to extend and that with a little asterisk, our existing contract so that we wouldn't have to go out to bid and could keep marching on with, throughout this election cycle and, you know, revisit this again in a year or two. The reason I say asterisk is that the extension, the length of extension has also not been discussed in this moment. I think that needs to be made clear if we're going to answer the director's question about if that's our policy. You know, what would that mean? Would, is it our stance that we would want the extension to be two years with option and then revisit in two years? You know, what does that look like? Because ultimately, the director will have, if this is the route he goes, he will also have to go to the Board of Supervisors to do this. And so I think it's important for us to be very clear on what we mean when we say extension and why. Yes, Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to link this back to something earlier in the conversation, which is, you know, talking about how much work an RFI is. Like an RFP is even, even more work. And so I think, you know, this could potentially save you some time if you're able to avoid the whole rigmarole of writing an RFP and then doing that whole bidding, bidding process. So it could, it could potentially be, um, you know, a time saver as well for you. And I, I think that, yeah, if you had the, you know, with, if the commission was supporting this approach and you went to the board, I'm, I'm confident that it would, it would sail through. You know, this isn't something that you'd be doing on your own. You know, assuming the commission were to adopt a policy supporting that. So, um, yeah, I mean, it could, it could save you some time to go that approach.
Is that of interest to you? Like, would you want the, the commission to take a position on that?
Yeah, I think it'd be good. I mean, because in the past, yeah, because things can turn pretty quickly on these contracts with, with voting system vendors at the commission, by the commission. So I, I think it makes sense. It would be good policy, good approach by the commission to actually put forward they would support. And they could even, of course, clarify that the support of a contract, potential contract extension is really also in support of the policy to bring an open source system eventually into San Francisco. That way, it's just not just, you know, John Arns is against open source, hang onto Dominion, you know? So I, I think that, I think it would be a good idea and a good approach. I, so thank you. If, if that's what you're offering, I accept.
Yeah, well, and also if, and I know you don't want to get into the contract in full public. And so if you can't answer this at this time, totally understood. But would you want to extend the contract as existing? Or would you rather move forward with your plans? And again, if that's not something you want to answer in open session, I completely respect that and understand why.
Yeah, I don't think I'm at this point ready to comment on the contract.
Yeah, because I just don't think the commission should make a policy until you, until we know where you stand. Like, I don't think that we should, I think we should support you in what you want to do and not, you know, adopt a policy that is in conflict with that. I think that would be a problem, so.
I appreciate that.
Happy to talk about it offline if that's better.
And I don't know if it has to be a policy, if even just, you know, a resolution, I don't, whatever, you know, so.
Ceremonial.
Yeah.
Commissioner Di?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I think it would be good to agendize this next, for the next month and, um, and maybe have a, you know, a more in-depth conversation about it. Like, what can we do consistent with the open source voting systems priority in step with this? Because, you know, to me, this is, it goes hand in hand. Like I said, we're trying to mitigate risk for the department, make sure the city has a solid voting system. At the same time, we don't want to cut off our nose despite our face here. We want to, want to make sure we're developing these other options because otherwise, you know, we don't want to be stuck in an old contract for other, either, right? So I think we would love your thoughts on that. You know, sending out an email was just our idea. If you have other ideas on how can we move things forward to continue developing viable options on the open source side? You know, and then the commission can support, you know, passing a resolution or whatever we need to do to make sure you have the support you need when you go before the board so that there's an understanding of why we're doing this. I think, you know, have a few weeks to think about it and prepare something for next meeting for a discussion. And we could probably have it in closed session if necessary, right?
I'm just looking at the time. Vice President Giordano, are there other items? Thank you, Commissioner Di. Are there other items, Vice President Giordano, on your, on this policy priority that you wanted to raise today? Okay, any other commissioner have comments they'd like to make? Concerns, observations? Before we move to public comment? Okay, let's, thank you for that. Thank you for the discussion. Let's move to public comment.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so that will close out Agenda Item Number Six. Thank you to the director. You're good to go. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Reports. Discussion and Possible Action on Commissioners Reports for Topics Not Covered by Another Item on This Agenda. Meetings with Public Officials, Oversight and Observation Activities, Long Range Planning for the Commission Activities in Areas of Proposed Study, Legislation, Effects Elections, Other. Sorry, I just got distracted because I realized there was one thing I wanted to mention before the end of that agenda item. Hold on one second if I can find my notes. Apologies, it'll be very quick. So just to circle back on something about the voter registration policy priority, we'll plan to agendize these as Commissioner Di had suggested. I did want to mention, Commissioner Parker brought up the questions for the director, which I had shared with him. And one of the things that you talked about, I think, one and two, but number three was also adding links to our signature. I talked about the website. And so also, we will, we should all plan to accommodate that and put items, these links, and happy to send an email reminder to folks to add them to your email signature as well. So I just wanted to elevate that. Very, very small thing. Apologies. Let's go back to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Reports. And I am actually going to first hand it over to Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Thank you, President Stone. I need to let everybody know that I just recently accepted a new position with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, which requires my full-time commitment. And as you all know, the city charter mandates that no member of the San Francisco Elections Commission may hold any employment with the city and county. So in accordance with the requirement, I am resigning from my position as an Elections Commissioner effective this Saturday, January 20th, when I begin my new position with the Public Utilities Commission. So I just want to thank everybody here. I've gained incredible valuable insights working with all of you and collaborating with you. I have tremendous respect for each and every one of you. I have learned so much. I, I really have. I've been humbled and I've been equally excited and thrilled by all of the progress that has been made. My first commission meeting was mind-blowing, but we got over that. And I really feel that I've developed wonderful relationships with my colleagues. I only have great things to say about all of you. So thank you so much. And I wish Director Arns had stayed to, though I'm very, I've, I've just always held him in high regard for operating free, fair, and functional elections. And I think that we've seen evidence of that once again in his director's report. And that is the mission of the Elections Commission. And I also want to call out our commission secretary, who we fought so hard to get on board here, Marisa Davis. And Marisa, am I pronouncing that correctly? Yes. President Stone worked so hard to bring you on board. It was her mandate, along with all of the different processes that she's brought to this commission, which have made these meetings run so incredibly smoothly. And I just, we just owe an incredible debt of thanks to her. And thank you for the wonderful time that I've had on this commission to you and to Vice President Giordano. And I really do want to call you all out, Commissioner Parker, Commissioner LaVolsi, Commissioner Di, and Commissioner Bernholtz as well. Thank you so much for being wonderful, wonderful colleagues. And I will treasure my time with you and my memories.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. I think, I, I won't try and speak for everyone, I'll speak for myself, but I think the, it is a huge loss. It has been a complete privilege to work with you. And I think you've brought great perspective. I think we've all grown so much as a body in the last year. I feel really proud of that. And I also think, I, I've seen each of us grow and learn in many ways. And I certainly feel that you have contributed tremendously to that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Even when you were very tired sometimes. We all, we all got through it. So it's a huge, huge loss. And we will do our best to try and carry on your perspective. And hopefully, someone who fills your shoes, has your knowledge and particularly your understanding of this city and the things that are important to this city, how the city operates, the bureaucracy that is involved. I think you have brought so much important perspective as well. So thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley, Commissioner LaVolsi.
Well, congratulations. And I just want to say that what I appreciate the most about you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley, is keeping us with our feet on the ground and remembering that there are processes, procedures, and that money is what's often needed for things we want to do. So I really appreciate that practical knowledge that you brought to many of our discussions. And you will be missed. And I hope this is, means an opportunity for a coffee or lunch at some point. But thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will share just a couple of quick other things, bittersweet. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the meeting schedule over the coming weeks. So as the commission is aware, we have to do two budget reviews. The, prior to the department submitting its final budget for, to the, to the mayor's office for their review and consideration. And those meetings need to be no less than 15 days apart. The tricky piece of that is that the director, we will not be able to begin reviewing that budget from the director until January 29th. He is going to submit it the Friday before, which means unless someone is wanting to work on a weekend, we will not be able to review it until January 29th. And then we must submit it by, and I actually, I wanted to ask DCA Russi one point of clarification. I know we already talked about this previously, but I just wanted to confirm that we needed to submit it by the fourth, by the 15th? Because I believe I had the 14th written down and then, then I also had the 15th. Can you confirm it's the 15th and not the 14th?
The code provides that the last day for the commission to approve it, or approve it, would be the 15th of February.
15th, thank you, okay. So we need to do our first review, January 29th, 30th, or 31st. And then the second review is basically the, the February 14th or February 15th. Now, the important piece of this is that the commission's regular meeting does not fall within either of those dates. So my proposal is that we hold a BOPAC, special BOPAC meeting on January 29th, 30th, or 31st. And then, now this is, we can discuss this, but move our regular February meeting, which is currently slated for February 21st, to the 14th or the 15th. Secretary Davis has already done the work to ensure that we can have a room available for these two different slots. Vice President Giordano has agreed to support the special BOPAC meeting. I also had support from Commissioner Parker, who said that she could support the BOPAC. If other folks have conflicts on the other dates and would prefer to take BOPAC, we can also swap around as well. The idea is to do this in the most painless way possible. So I guess let's start by saying, are folks able to accommodate moving the February regular meeting from the 21st to the 14th or the 15th? And I think just a head nod would be great. Really, we need a quorum. Okay, I see Commissioner Bernholtz has a thumbs up. Our folks, and I also want to add, I know that scheduling is very frustrating because we do these, you know, we anticipate that our meetings will be the third Wednesday of every month. So, but this, the budget process does happen, you know, once a year. So hopefully, this will be the only time. Yes, Commissioner LaVolsi?
Your, your question is about the 15th or the 14th and not the 29th, 30th, or 31st?
Yeah, let's start with the February, the February meeting. Yep. Commissioner Parker?
I let President Stone know this already. I will be out of town on the 14th, 15th and not available those days, which is fine if everybody, if there's a quorum, that's fine. Which, so I just won't be here those days.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. Yes, that's, that was one consideration, knowing that Commissioner Hayden Crowley will not be on the commission and the potential for a vacancy, at least one vacancy at that time, that the priority is really ensuring that we have quorum. So we will be at that point, we, with Commissioner Parker's absence, it would be, there would be five of us. So, yes, go ahead. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to correct myself. I'm glad you asked that question because I looked back at the code. It, it's actually February 14th.
14th.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm so glad.
Between 15 days that have to be between the two meetings and the...
Thank you. Thank you for double checking. No problem. I'm so glad to know because we can decide it here and now. So, okay, scratch that. And who can do February 14th? Commissioner Bernholtz can accommodate, Commissioner Di, okay, Vice President Giordano. No problem. And really, we need a quorum. Otherwise, I think we would probably have to delegate to a special committee of some kind. Wonderful. We'll all spend Valentine's Day together. And make sure you bring your Valentines for the director. Yes, Vice President Giordano.
So DCA Russi, can, can the meetings be reversed? Can it be the commission meeting first and then the committee meeting or?
The, the, the purpose of the first meeting is for the public to provide input on the budget priorities. And then the second meeting is when the commission actually approves the budget. And the commit, the whole commission needs to consider the budget.
Okay, so, okay, so we will move forward with moving the February 21st meeting. We are going to cancel that meeting, or rather, push it up a week to... We are going to cancel that meeting, or rather, push it up a week to Wednesday, February 14th. That will be our new February meeting. We will still move forward as if it's a regular meeting, but the budget will be the primary agenda item for that meeting. And then, does anyone have a burning passion to participate in the BOPAC meeting as an alternate for Commissioner Parker? Well, Commissioner Parker, perhaps you want to join that BOPAC one, since you can't make the... I mean, I won't speak for you, but you might want to be able to review the budget. But perhaps in lieu of myself or Vice President Giordano, does anyone... You're not all dying to meet again February? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Lavolci.
I'm sorry. I just got a little confused there. The BOPAC meeting is... Sorry, the BOPAC meeting is going to be before the meeting on the 14th?
Correct. It would be January 29th, 31st. Yeah, 29th or 31st.
Okay. I absolutely cannot meet on the 31st. I have 500 people coming to my school for an event and I have to be there.
Okay. Well, I think let's keep it. So, it will be a special BOPAC meeting of Commissioner Parker, Vice President Giordano, and myself on either the 29th or the 31st. We will... Oh, yes, DCA Russi.
It needs to be 15 days.
So, it has to be the 29th?
Yep.
Okay. So, it will be January... Monday, January 29th. I'm glad you're keeping us honest. It will be Monday, January 29th. That also helps you have your answer immediately, Secretary Davis. So, the BOPAC meeting to review the budget, the first review, will be Monday, January 29th. And the second will be at the full commission meeting that will be moved from the 21st to the 14th of February. Is that clear? Thank you, everyone, for accommodating that. I really appreciate it. I did have one other... Or I had two other items, which I actually... One of them I meant to mention after Commissioner Hayden Crowley's announcement, which is just that DCA Huling, Delane, how do I say her last name, that she is no longer staffing the commission. It will be just DCA Russi and DCA Flores going forward. And then, the last piece is, we had talked about on the... I don't remember when we talked about this, but doing a... After we had done the warehouse tour during the retreat in December, we will be doing a... Or we had talked about doing the same thing for the Vote Center in City Hall. And I spoke with the director about this and he proposed, and he said we could do it in March. I thought it would be more fun for us to do it ahead of November. And so, just everyone kind of... This is a ways away, but keep in the back of your head, one of the dates we would do would be November 1st, 2nd, or 4th. And we would get to do, you know, the full... It would be in the afternoon, probably. And the director would show us the whole kind of process. I think there were a lot of questions when we did the warehouse tour around vote-by-mail ballots and the process of those. And so, now we'll get the ability to see that at the Vote Center in City Hall. So, just keep that on your radar, November 1st, 2nd, or 4th. Yes, Commissioner Lavolci. Oh, okay. Correct. Yes. And I'll bring that up again in the future. Yes, good. That is it. Are there other commissioner reports? Yes, Vice President Giordano.
Thank you, President Stone. Just one thing to mention. One of my action items from the last meeting was to just incorporate the revisions from the annual report that we discussed. And I was intending to do that today, because I wanted to finish it before the meeting, but I wasn't able to get to it. But I should be able to do it in the next few days. And Commissioner Hayden Crowley, I did receive your email. You had suggested some wording to incorporate, like we discussed at the meeting. So, I have that. So, I just wanted to give people an update on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to public comment on Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Reports. Oh, were you going to say something? Commissioner Dai.
Do you want me to give an update on it? Yeah. Vice President Giordano just asked about the redistricting report. So, Michelle and I spent most of the early holidays incorporating all of your comments and revisions, and then flipped it over to President Stone, who had a couple of last suggestions, which were in the process of reviewing. And it is also simultaneously under review, or will be shortly under review, by the DCAs. So, and President Stone's already drafted a letter to go to the board. So, we just need to cross our i's and dot our t's and troubleshoot some formatting issues and we'll be done. I don't know if anyone has a strong opinion. Commissioner Parker and I have been debating whether we should have the appendices as a separate document, or whether we should try to put it all in a single document, assuming it's not too big. If anyone has a strong opinion on that?
I mean, the commission voted to move forward as drafted with the specific yellow changes. So, I personally would propose that we not reopen the feedback on the report. That's my personal feeling.
That's fine. We'll go with a single document then.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Let's move to public comment.
There are no public commenters.
Quite a bunch today. Thank you, Secretary Davis. So, we will now move to election of commission executive officers. Discussion and possible action to elect a new commission president and vice president per commission bylaws. Article 5, Section 1B. The procedure will be as follows. And I'm just going to read the full procedure. The chair of the meeting will open nominations for president. Any commissioner who wishes to nominate a candidate will state the name of that person. If that person agrees to run, then that person is nominated. When there are no further nominations, the chair will close the nominations and call a roll call vote, in which each commissioner shall state the name of the nominee for whom she or he is voting. If a nominee receives four or more votes, that person is elected president. If no nominee receives four votes, the commission may have further discussion and proceed to another vote. This process shall repeat until one nominee has received four or more votes. The same process will then be used to elect a vice president. Per the bylaws, the term shall begin immediately at the conclusion of the meeting. So, with that, we will open nomination for president. Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
I nominate President Stone for another term to be president.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Oh, I accept. You don't have to second. You could just nominate. Are there any other nominations? Let's move to... I appreciate that. Let's move to a roll call vote then. Before we go to vice president? Because we were going to do president, then vice president?
Public comment.
Oh, before we take any action? Okay. So, let's hold on public comment. Let's... Because we also do the need to do the nomination period for the vice president.
I think you could take public comment on the entire item once, just before you take a vote on anything. It should be before that.
Okay. Would folks like me to take public comment now or move to the nomination of the vice president now?
The latter.
Yeah, just do the next nomination.
Oh, okay. You'd like to move to public comment now?
Well, the agenda says to... The vice president should have been after the vote.
Okay. Okay. I hear half and half public comment. Let's just move to public comment.
There are no public commenters.
And we can always take public comment again after vice president. That's totally fine. Okay. Let's... Secretary Davis, will you call a roll call vote for the election of the president, the executive officer of president?
President Stone.
Stone.
Vice President Giordano.
President Stone.
Commissioner Bernholtz.
President Stone.
Commissioner Dai.
President Stone.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
President Stone.
President Stone.
President Stone.
President Stone.
President Stone.
Wow. Thank you, everyone. Certainly, one of the less painful ones I've done since being on this body. So, I really appreciate that. Let's move to nomination for vice president. Any nominations? Yes.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Parker.
Okay. Commissioner Lavolci.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Dai.
Okay. Commissioner Parker, do you accept as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. We can move to public comment.
There are no public commenters.
Secretary Davis, would you mind moving to the roll call vote for vice president?
Parker.
Vice President Giordano.
Commissioner Parker.
Commissioner Bernholtz.
Commissioner Dai.
Commissioner Dai.
I guess I vote for myself.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Parker.
Commissioner Lavolci.
Commissioner Dai.
Commissioner Parker.
Parker.
Four for Parker and three for Dai.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. Thank you, Secretary Dai. Thank you, Secretary... Or not Secretary Dai, Secretary Parker. Commissioner Parker. Thank you, Secretary Davis. Thank you, Commissioner Dai. And thank you, Commissioner Parker. I appreciate that. And I also would ask Secretary Dai if you're open to also being the BOPAC chair for the year as well. We can discuss it offline if you would like.
I am not going to escape this, am I?
I'm so sorry. I'm off.
We can discuss it offline.
We can discuss it offline.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it, everyone. And, you know, these are never easy. Are there any other comments before we move to Agenda Item Number Eight? Agenda item... That closes out Agenda Item Number Seven. Let's move to Agenda Item Number Eight, Agenda Items for Future Meetings. Discussion and possible action regarding items for future agendas. Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, I know one item that we had discussed maybe five or six months ago was the ballot label state law that, you know, San Francisco could choose whether to opt in or out. And especially since this election was just a two-card ballot, like, it seems like there would have been room to have it for this election. So, maybe it's something the commission could discuss a policy around the ballot labels. And then, there was something else. Oh, and I don't know, President Stone, if you think this is necessary, but perhaps an agenda item around formalizing the policy for sending letters to the appointing authorities for around vacancies?
Yes. So, I'd like to respond to both of those. That was actually a complete oversight. I had meant to bring that up after... You can tell I'm a little all over the place here. But I meant to bring that up after Commissioner Hayden Crowley's announcement that I wanted to... Unfortunately, that would mean us going back. But the commission had discussed the letter for... But I believe we took action, correct, on that letter?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. I thought... Or was that just in BOPAC?
No.
Okay. We'll have to go back, but I... Okay. I couldn't recall if we had approved that as a commission or just in BOPAC. But I wanted to get the commission's blessing to send that to the seats that will be vacant. So, I believe we already sent one to the board, although I don't recall... Or I don't remember if we did or did not. But then also to the mayor's office as well. So, what we... Given that we have our meeting sooner rather than later in February, I can add that to the agenda. And then, I also wanted to... And so, thank you for bringing that up. I had that on my list and I just... It was an oversight. And then, the ballot label, I'm glad you brought that up. I have been in conversation with the director about this offline. And actually, if you look at his March report, you'll see that there's already movement toward that. So, the Vice President Giordano is speaking directly about AB 1416, which was including proponents and opponents on the ballots themselves... Names of proponents and opponents of ballot measures on the ballot themselves. And there is concern about the number of ballot cards. There are many concerns about including this. And this had been discussed at the commission back in October?
Something like that.
Yeah, in the fall. And I had spoken with the director about it offline. He is kind of working on a... We've been working on many different components of this that we plan to share with the commission. It's just there have been too many other priorities that have kind of deprioritized this. But yes, I can speak... I don't know if that can necessarily be as soon as February 14th. But yes, in either February or March, that needs to be something that is brought back up. And so... Oh, what I was going to point to is in the March election plan on page... Hold on a second. Just because I did see someone from the League of Women Voters on as well, who I think had asked about this. On page 17 of the March election plan, it says ballots for all voters will include information on where voters can obtain information about proponents and opponents. So, that will be... That is new. That is something in the March election plan, even though there isn't going to necessarily be full transition to AB 1416. There is going to now be something on the ballot themselves that says... That directs people to the voter information pamphlet, where they can see who the proponents and opponents are. So, I just wanted to give everyone a little kind of preview of that. But yes, I will also make sure that's included on the agenda as well. Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Thank you, President Stone. I don't know that this would be an agenda item, but it is... Pertains to your processes. My understanding is that when people leave the commission, I've been advised that I have to file a Form 700 for leaving the commission. And so, I'm just reminding you, Commissioner... Vice President Giordano. But then also to all the commissioners, I think that this... We all have to do our Form 700, just a reminder.
Thanks.
Yes. I'm sure a second... Yes. I'm sure Secretary Davis will be bothering all of you.